I'm calling the meeting of the Marquette City Commission to order. This is Monday, July 29, 2024 at 6:00 p.m.
I can't hear you. It's never going back.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Smith, I appreciate your enthusiasm. City Clerk, would I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Otte.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hanley.
Here.
And Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. I'm looking for a motion for approval. Commissioner Otte.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
And Commissioner Larson.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. I have one announcement today, and that is that early voting is going on at the present time. You can vote at Peter White Public Library in the Arts and Culture Department downstairs from eight to four every day, including Saturday and Sunday. Early voting closes this Sunday, August 4th, at 4:00 p.m. So consider voting early. Everyone is so enthusiastic today. So let's move on to boards and committees. And Pro Tem Hanley, apparently you want to make a motion?
I do. I move that we appoint Charles Clecha to the Downtown Development Authority for an unexpired term ending 1/1 of 2025.
And is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel.
My second motion.
Any comment?
I would like to comment on this. I think that Charles is a great choice. He is a great addition and a working member of the downtown area to begin with, and I think he will do a wonderful job in this position. I'm really happy to see what he does.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, thanks for stepping up, Charles. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. So it's time for public comments. If you wish to make a comment, please step up to the podium. Your comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comment.
By way of introduction, my name is Linda Smith. I represent the Convention of States as the content writer. I was hoping to request to have a discussion put on the agenda at a future meeting. This is a nonpartisan organization working to support the rights and constitutional rights of the people, and it gives us a voice, a bigger voice. And like I said, it was written in the Constitution as Article 5. I did forward some information by email earlier, and I have some information here as well, but am requesting that be put on the agenda at a future meeting.
Just stay there a second. If you stated it, I missed it. Your address is?
Oh, 344 Address Sheet, Marquette.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
If you would like to pass something, now you can give it to the city clerk.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. As you all know, there's an abundance of people in the area that post pictures, items, questions about the city of Marquette that never seem to get answered necessarily at the same site where they're posted. So what I'm going to do tonight, I haven't done before, but I'm going to bring a few of them to your attention simply because it seems like, I don't know if you have the staff time to do this, you probably don't, but a simple posting from the city on some of these would stop a lot of fussing on Facebook, as I like to say. And of course, everybody has a right to fuss. The first issue has to do with the car over the boulder at Picnic, at the island. The picture has been posted, reposted. I've seen it 11 different times. I appreciate that not every car over every boulder deserves a massive news story, but a simple statement from the city that it was a one-person car accident, no injuries, no follow-up required, would be of assistance. Also, was the boulder permanently damaged? Because that sort of thing, putting a car on top of a boulder, can damage it. Secondly, I would appreciate an update on the dredging operation going on at the Or Dock, because last week, there was a picture of an ore boat. I swear to God, it looked like it was at an angle at the Or Dock, well, in-progress Or Dock, and speculation was that it was stuck. Speculation was that it was, the trimmers hadn't trimmed right, and it was listing. Now, I appreciate the city has many things to study on, but this is also something that would be of interest, because that project is nowhere near, to me, when I drive around the island, it still is torn up now as it was in the spring. I'm sure there's an end date. I'm sure it's going well, but an update would be most appreciated. I also have noted that we have lost another person to Lake Superior. A young teenage boy was caught in a riptide. Also, over the weekend, we lost a scuba diver up at Isle Royale. And I know that we do a fantastic job with public service announcements, but I really would like the city to invest in repetitive public service announcements, and I especially would like it at the hotels. Something in the entranceway of the hotel from the city of Marquette, a poster of all the hotels, so you're not picking on one, saying, "Please be aware, the following incidents have occurred in this area. Lake Superior is not Disneyland, and it is not maintained in safety. It is what it is." And I don't mean, I mean, I'm just, I see these notices, and I'm just crying that these things happen, but the city could do a lot more with the hotels to let people know that you can end up not going home alive unless you're careful. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name's Jane Fitkin. I live at 226 West Hewitt. I've lived and biked in Marquette for five years, and I'm part of the Marquette Sustainability Coalition. We're like a community group looking for and advocating for sustainable solutions for this town. I'm just here today because in April, I came to you guys to ask you to prioritize bike infrastructure in the city and to take a step forward by repainting the bike lanes and sharos on Third Street. And today, I'm here again with a smile on my face, and I'm a little bit late because you did, the city did a little bit while ago, but to thank you guys and the city's planning and engineering departments, because if you've been down Third Street or several of the other streets, they have been repainted with the sharos, and so I really appreciate that. So yeah, thank you for showing a commitment to improving bike infrastructure in Marquette. There's obviously a long way to go before we achieve the ideal scenario for cyclists and other non-motorized transportation users, but this, along with the plans in place and the work already done, does bring us a bit closer. I look forward to returning to the city to talk more about bike infrastructure and to make sure we're able to follow through on the plans and dreams laid out in the master plan draft and the planned bike routes. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave. I'm here because I'm not one to go out and campaign, but I am on the ballot. And since early voting is going on, I figured this would be my only campaign speech. It's not a debate. I don't plan on, like, discussing lots of things, but I'm here to say, I think the north side of town has been neglected, and it's been neglected for a lot of reasons, but mostly, we seem to be packing a lot of residuals up that way. And I want to suggest, maybe we are as, what's the word, citizen-compact as you are on east side of town. What I'm asking for is, since the DDA gets all this TIF financing, and we happen to pay them, and they happen to put out the parking meters, if we're paying the DDA a majority of their income through whatever funding you guys have done, by the way, congratulations on making that done, but if they have a farmer's market, how much do they pay the city to actually block off the road? Because right now, on the north side of town, if I want to go ice skating, nobody is using Lakeview Arena. And you guys, as a city, haven't put ice in Lakeview Arena. There's no ice at the Berry Center, there's no ice at Nagani. Basically, in the next 200, 300 miles, there is no skating facility. And on the way into town, on Front Street, coming off the highway, there are at least eight awards to the skating community. And this is not just hockey, but figure skating. All these wonderful events that people keep talking about and coming up to Marquette to enjoy, we seem to treat it as a winner-only event. And it seems like the Parks and Rec Department, the Arts and Culture Department, is ignoring us and just said, "Whatever, that's something that happens." Why, if there's art on the rocks at Picnic Rocks, why was there no event happening at Lakeview Arena? They had all the parking taken up, but there was absolutely nothing going on on the inside. By the way, if you try to go in there and skate around and play some hockey, you'll get employees yelling at you to tell you to get off, and they like yelling at you. So again, the north side of town is being treated like it's just someplace that nobody wants to deal with. And I'm here to say, I want to take one of your seats so that I can actually put a TIF financing in place, so that we can have a farmer's market at Lakeview Arena, so that we can actually do a lot of the things that we expect to do. DDA is getting a new pavilion. I don't know how much that's going to cost, but all it costs is $100,000 to get a paving done on Lakeview Arena. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And we have a presentation this evening for the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And Sherry Davies, are you doing this presentation?
I would be Kelly New.
Oh, Kelly is here. Okay, Kelly's, Kelly will be here.
Hi there.
Do we want her over here on this one? Yep, come over on this podium.
Thank you for having me tonight. For the record, my name is Kelly New. I'm here on behalf of the local Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And Sherry and Mac are here, too, and I would like to request that if I say anything wrong or have questions, that they can chime in if that would be okay with the commission. So the presentation today will just, it's kind of an FYI about the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, some of the mechanisms for funding, and then an overview of some of the projects that have happened already or are underway. So the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority was discovered, excuse me, established in the 90s, and the purpose is really to help kind of eliminate or alleviate some of the burdens that come from redevelopment, especially of sites that are contaminated or have structures on them that maybe need to be cleaned up, or have, you know, pollution or other things that are disruptive to the environment and make future development inhospitable. So it's a tool to use incremental taxes resulting from future private investment in these spaces to fund those upfront costs and kind of kickstart development. The tax increment financing, I think we have another slide that describes this, but tax increment financing basically takes a baseline capture of the property and then estimates the future tax that would be generated if improvements were to occur. And so then that increment from the taxes are used to fund eligible expenses. Good, okay. Cool. A brownfield-eligible property, it has to meet several requirements. It has to be contaminated, blighted, functionally obsolete, or historically designated. A housing property is something that's new added to the list of eligible properties. The state law says that one or more housing units planned can be eligible for brownfield funds. However, our policy states that it must be two or more housing units in order to kind of incentivize density. And the brownfield plan must be created and then approved by the Brownfield Authority and the governing body to become an eligible property. Brownfield eligible activities are shown on the screen, largely dealing with environmental eligible activities such as lead and asbestos abatement, demolition, et cetera. And then again, bolded on the screen are the housing development eligible activities, which are new per the state legislation. There are also brownfield plan developments that can be funded through the, as an eligible activity, and administrative and operating costs for the board. So this goes into a bit more detail about the tax increment financing. So again, the base year is established with the approval of the brownfield fund, so that would basically be current-year taxes. And then the future investment is estimated, and then the property taxes that would occur from that investment are calculated. And so then those increased taxes are, as they are generated, they're used by the TIF to repay eligible expenses. And so after those eligible expenses are paid, then the taxes are distributed to the taxing jurisdictions as normal. For financial obligations, so there's a lengthy development agreement that's created through a plan, and it contains basic, or I guess you would say, standard obligations for the developer, such as holding appropriate insurances and dignifying the MBRA and city if losses were to occur, providing documentation of actual expenses, just general accounting. And it requires the authority to review and approve all eligible expenses, and then the reimbursement for bond payment. It takes the top priority for those captured taxes, and then the excesses distributed to the local, or to the taxing authorities. Here is a list of the current authority roster. We have one vacant position. We're supported by Tara as our treasurer, and then Sean Hobbins as the Assistant City So I'll go through a few of these projects, and please stop me if you have any questions. I'll just kind of highlight a couple of key points about these, but I think one of the great things about the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is that it allows for the city to pay for infrastructure and other public investments as part of the project. So with Founder's Landing, there were 42 residential condo units, an underground parking facility, 68 apartments. You can see the stats on the board, or, excuse me, on the slide, but lots of housing was created, as well as the Fairfield Inn, so hotels and housing through the Founder's Landing Project. And it is still under development, right? It's not quite complete. There's phase three left. The Founder's Landing Project helped to fund the pure redevelopment that we are all enjoying this summer, and so that was funded with 45% from state tax capture. So it provides an ability to leverage state and regional funds as well. The Liberty Way Project, it created 60 or so jobs, and then is also associated with the UP HP 154. Is that jobs? 154 jobs? The Nestle Down Bread and Breakfast was completed in 2015, and this, eligible activities have been fully reimbursed, and then the, an additional $25,000 has been deposited in the local brownfield revolving fund, which I'll describe in a couple of slides. This project's leveraged about $5,000 in state funds. The DLP Marquette General Replacement Hospital, the public benefit that was funded through this project was the city building, the Municipal Service Center, and the US 41 Roundabout. 231 West Patisserie created the adjacent DDA walkway that connects down to the southern parking lot there. The Customs House created six units downtown on the water there, and then also provided an acquisition to provide for the Baragas Street extension. The UP State Bank, the brownfield funds helped to pay for environmental vapor mitigation and removed the vacant Burger King, so it removed a vacant property from the site. The Or Dock Brewing Expansion is underway right now, and when that's completed, we will have a new connection to the Roseway Walkway down to the lakefront, and then expansion of the Iron Ore Heritage Trail. This project also leveraged a state RAP grant, which provided for expansion beyond what was originally conceived. The Vault Marquette Project also underway, so this will provide up to 40 residential units, and then the public benefit will be the public parking deck, which will provide almost 200 spaces downtown. This project is a big partnership with the DDA also. And then the former Marquette General Hospital redevelopment, so currently in demolition phase, but the planned improvement for this is reconstruction of College Street, and then also, you know, plans for a mixed-use development in a blighted, at a previously blighted property. So some key points to highlight here, kind of benefits of the brownfield, is that, again, it provides a mechanism to capture state and regional revenues for city infrastructure. It allows for capture of the local brownfield revolving fund, which has a little bit more latitude in spending compared to the traditional TIF fund. Is that fair? Okay. And it funds the Cliffs Dow Environmental Monitoring and Remediation, and then the new housing TIF that's been discussed will be an important tool for the city where we don't currently have affordable housing mechanisms. So this table outlines all of the funding that's been leveraged through state and regional funding, so totaling over $57 million since the inception of the brownfield, and outlines all of the projects that have been funded through that. And then we also wanted to highlight the local coordination that occurs, so the Local Development Finance Authority and the DDA Brownfield Coordination for eligible properties. The DDA and the LDFA capture a portion of the TIF in their respective districts, and so that can go into, you know, projects that the DDA, the LDFA supports. It requires inter-local agreements, and projects that have utilized that are 231 West, Customs House, and the Vault Marquette. And then the housing TIF that, again, has been described in the work session earlier, but is really set up to kind of help incentivize housing throughout the state. As a tool, it has already, I think, gained a lot of traction throughout the state, and it's a creative opportunity to utilize those TIF funds and help fill the gap between development costs and revenues, and will require a lot of coordination and cooperation by both local actors, the state, and private developers. The significance of the housing TIF is that it doesn't need to kind of have that environmental component to, as the contaminated, blighted, functionally obsolete, historic, or land big property, it just has to be a property with two or more units. So it expands kind of the reach of that, of the TIF mechanism to support housing. It expands to help with site preparation and infrastructure, and can significantly increase the amount of brownfield TIF. Mac, would you add anything to this?
No, I think we've talked about that.
Okay.
This is a little bit different way of dealing with brownfield TIF, so it's a more morphous calculation than it's for just hard cost construction.
Thank you. So key projects that are on our radar for 2024 and 2025 are, you know, ongoing construction with the former Marquette General Hospital redevelopment, the Vault Project, and then anticipating housing TIF projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Commissioners, any comments or questions regarding brownfield? Commissioner Smith?
Thanks for being here, Kelly. Nice job. Brownfield is complicated and a really helpful tool, but I think it's great that we do an annual refresher where we just remind ourselves of all the different ways it can be used, what we have been working on, what we're planning to work on, and then this new housing TIF option that we just had a work session on prior to this meeting. So appreciate the information and thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Otte?
Kelly, thank you for being here. You did awesome, and I just wanted to say thank you for pointing out so many of the public use items. I think a lot of times, those things get forgotten with all the brownfield redevelopment plans, and really showing those tonight is really the reason why this is such a huge and useful tool for us. So just thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Kelly. Yeah, this is one of those things that, no matter how many times I've been through this presentation, you're always learning a little bit of something new. So it's great to have. One question, I guess, is when we're looking at the realization dates on a lot of these projects, I know that some of them can change, and we had a brief conversation in between meetings tonight, and I'm not sure, Sean, maybe you can shed some light on it, but some of these projects, especially Duke Life Point, some of them mature quicker than anticipated. And, you know, I don't know if there's anything that we want to kind of expand on with that or how those things happen, but, you know, it's an important part of these projects, and it would be helpful for me especially to understand why that happens and what happens when it happens.
That's a good question, Commissioner Schlegel.
I know there's-
I know there's kind of a sense that some of these will pay off earlier, but really, we're really good at guessing when they are going to pay off, I think. So the dates that we put in there probably lean towards the conservative side, but would only really be adjusted up a few years, I think, at the end of them. We can see a quicker rate of return if somebody, if, you know, the developer puts in a higher amount of investment than they initially necessarily contract for, right, or what through like the development agreement. So if their investment in the project is a lot larger than they initially anticipated, then, yeah, the taxable value would increase and the amount captured and available for reimbursements would increase and therefore their obligations would be able to be paid back a little bit quicker. But I would really say that, you know, when we look at the remaining obligations, both towards the developers and towards city bonds, we are, the numbers I've been presenting, that's what I would bank on, you know, and we would be pleasantly surprised if, you know, that was able to be paid off further, but mid 2030s is when a lot of these mature.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
City Manager, you look like you were going to say something in addition to that.
I don't know if I should say this or it's going to hurt us or help us, but things like when we did increase the millage rate, the operating millage, that did actually assist with it, but not of great significance, that it would shave off a year or two.
Other commissioners? Okay. Kelly, thank you so much for being here. I really appreciated the slides and I don't recall receiving a copy of those. Did we? Okay, so I just missed it. I'll look in my email because I think that those slides were very helpful and I really do appreciate having them. I do have a question for you though, if you would go back there. If I heard you correctly, you said that there's a policy, that the state for the housing says it could be one housing unit, but there's a policy for two housing units or more? Is that a Brownfield Committee policy that has been made? Okay.
It is, yeah.
All right. That was...
I'll clarify that.
Thank you.
We were talking about that in the context of the local Brownfield Fund, providing support for projects, and it was determined in the conversation that we didn't want to get into single-family, you know, units and go through that whole process there, so it had to be at least two units for the Brownfield Authority to consider an allocation for the local Brownfield Fund.
Okay.
If I can add just a little bit more context.
Yes, you can.
You know, the policy in particular we're talking about is the local Brownfield Revolving Fund, which is a fund built up by the Brownfield Authority to support projects like the ones we've seen, but maybe through grants or through low-interest loans or through mechanisms other than straight-up TIF recapture, right? It's a mechanism that lets us avoid TIF capture for similar projects. So one thing the Authority was doing while looking through that policy was saying, you know, we want to have a bigger impact. We don't want, you know, individual homes coming up and saying, you know, okay, well, this can support a single-family home, a one-unit, single-family home, pay for my roof, right? We want to have a broad impact on housing in the community, so just putting that bar, I mean, two is a low bar still, but putting that bar above one was a way to eliminate, you know, just making this like a renovation fund and trying to make it a broader housing fund.
Okay. Thank you. Anyway, I do appreciate the work that the committee does. I know that committee members have to do some heavy lifting in terms of knowledge base for even making those decisions and then studying the Brownfield plans and I do appreciate the work that goes into every decision and every consideration that the committee has. Good thing we have the support staff that we have too, right? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on to a public hearing. I am going to open the public hearing for the rezoning of 446 East Crescent Street, but first, City Clerk, could I have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The city recently received a request to rezone 446 East Crescent Street from a planned unit development to a mixed-use zoning district. On June 18th, 2024, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and discussed the proposed rezoning in accordance with procedures established in the Land Development Code for evaluating the merits of rezoning requests and the administrative procedures for processing such a request. The following motion was made. It was moved by C. Gottlieb, seconded by S. Lowry and carried seven to zero that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report for 03-REZ-06-24, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the Community Master Plan and meets the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 54.1405, and hereby recommends that the City Commission approve 03-REZ-06-24 as presented with the following conditions: that the rezoning is approved when the PUD is terminated via proof of an affidavit that the termination of the PUD has been recorded in the property deed after the City Commission hearing. Following the action of the Planning Commission, city staff discovered that no PUD agreement was recorded in the chain of title at the Register of Deeds. Therefore, approval of this rezoning will act to terminate the prior PUD zoning without the need to record any document at the Register of Deeds. Fiscal effect: none. Recommendation: concur with the Planning Commission recommendation and approve the rezoning. Alternatives: as determined by the commission.
Okay, and with that, I will open the public hearing for the rezoning of 446 East Crescent Street. Those wishing to comment, please step forward to the podium and we will need your name and address.
Good evening, Matt Trito, 2915 Partview Drive. Just here representing the owner to answer any questions or concerns that the commission may have about the rezoning application. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Anyone else?
I wanted...
This is, this would be...
I kind of hurried.
This would be specific to the rezoning, okay.
All right, too soon.
You, there is a second public comment session at the end of the meeting if you care to. Okay. Anyone else to comment on the rezoning? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion from the City Commissioners. Commissioner Otterway?
I move to concur with the Planning Commission recommendation and approve the rezoning.
And the second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second? Surely?
Surely.
Yes, I would second the motion.
Any comments?
No.
Commissioner Schlegel, would you like to comment?
No.
Any other further comments? All those in favors, oh wait, this is a roll call vote, so City Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otterway?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda, I am looking for a motion. Commissioner Schlegel?
Got that time. I would make the motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
And the second, Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Okay, any comments? Other commissioners? All those in favor, say yes.
Also a roll call.
Well, this is a roll call, sorry. City Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otterway?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Which brings us on to the new business, which is the Eagle or E-G-L-E L-S-R, L-S-L-R Grant Professional Service Contract Approval. City Clerk, may we have the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The city was awarded a $600,000 grant by the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle, to identify water service line materials at locations throughout the city which are constructed of unknown materials and based on age may possibly be made of lead. This work must be completed to meet the Complete Distribution System Material Inventory requirements of the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act. The City Commission approved the grant agreement with Eagle at its meeting on May 13th, 2024. A request for proposals to complete service line identification in homes through hydro excavation was advertised and the city received one proposal from Smith Construction, Inc. Fiscal effect: none. All contracted expenses will be reimbursed. Recommendation: approve the professional services contract for lead service line identification services with Smith Construction, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $600,000 and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Alternatives: as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, I have a motion. Commissioner Larson?
I move that we approve the professional services contract for lead service line identification services with Smith Construction, Inc. for a not, for an amount not to exceed $600,000 and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
And the second? Protem Hanley?
I second.
Comments?
Nope.
Comments? Any other commissioners?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you. Is Smith the regular contractor that has done this for us in the past?
Is this routine?
I don't know that I can answer that.
So, I guess, let me just clarify on something with this, is this is something that is now being required and is a part of a requirement to identify the materials that our water service lines are. And so this may not be necessarily the routine contractor that inspects it. A lot of times when we are doing construction projects in an area, we can dig to see where things are and a lot of times those contractors are part of that, but this is for a bigger inventory to cover the areas that we have unknown service lines, materials. So it's not necessarily a regular contractor who does this normally or not. Based on my review.
That's pretty fair. I mean, Smith does do this kind of work. Normally, the work that we've done for these kind of situations have been done by our inspectors on site, but this is such of a magnitude that the $600,000 gift coming from the state, we can't hire a bunch of people to do that, so we contracted out.
Right on. Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments from the commissioners or questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Which brings us to our second public comment session. If you would like to comment, please step up to the podium, state your name and address and you have three minutes.
I'm new at this, so... I was very aware of time when I was up here a little while ago.
Would you say your name and address again, please? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Linda Smith, 344 Aldra Street, Marquette. I was so aware of time before that I didn't mention, where people could get more information online about this and educate themselves, it's at conventionofstates.com. It's full, you know, videos and so forth and giving a background of the organization and it's, especially in our world, political world today, it's an amazing tool to have available to us where the voters, the people have more of a voice and a seat at the table in making decisions. It's critical that the elected officials have an actual, real communication with their constituents and understanding of what their needs are. So once again, that information is conventionofstates.com and I have a personal email of linda.smith@cosaction.com. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I'm here tonight to announce an event taking place over the next three nights and I want to be very careful as I give these dates. Tuesday, July 30th, Wednesday, July 31st and Thursday, August 1st, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Ramada on Washington Street in the Baraga Room. We will be offering petitions for signing for recall of two current board trustee members for the Marquette area public school system. You are eligible to sign these petitions if you are a registered voter within the city of Marquette, the township of Marquette, Chocley Township or the MAPS District of Sands Township. I understand that all city clerk's offices are open this week. If you don't happen to be a registered voter, you simply go to the city clerk's office, you can register and be eligible to fill out these forms. Now, the signing of petitions are due this Friday, August 2nd at 4:00 PM at the county clerk's office. Therefore, this rest of this message is to anyone out there who has a batch of forms that they were given or borrowed from someone, please come to the Ramada and give me your forms before 7:00 PM on Thursday, August 1st, because I will be up all night counting and I will not have the ability to go out and about and pick up forms later on. So if you have forms, this is the week to get them to us. If you have been putting off signing, we've had some unfortunate incidents of people being harassed, drive-bys, gestures, language, argumentation, none of that will happen in the Ramada. We have rented a conference room like anybody can. It is a private conference room and it's not on public land, it's not anywhere near a public event. Therefore, we have the ability to have a private location for people to come and sign forms where no one, it's no one else's business that they've come and signed forms. I also encourage any of you, and I think every time I've been out collecting signatures, I get at least 10 to 12 people who say, let me think about it. The time for thinking is over. The time for signing the form or not signing the form, to quote one of my favorite characters, there is no try. There is either sign or not sign. That's Yoda from Empire Strikes Back. You either sign the form now or you don't. And what is happening is a variety of different feedback is coming my way. One last thing I wish to say, we need thousands of signatures, we have many hundreds of signatures and I'm confident in making this statement that until the issue of the nickname for the high school is returned, I don't believe there's any chance that the Marquette area public school system will ever be able to pass a millage in this town. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment?
Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., City of Marquette. I'm going to follow up on what I was talking about with Lakeview Arena. I'm just asking for the city and the city commission, literally, you guys are the ones who sign the numbers of how much it costs for ice. You might get, you know, requests or proposals by the Parks and Rec, but you're the one who says it's going to be a $300 an hour ice rental, not $100. And I understand you might lose money, but this whole Brownfield development thing is supposed to fund things like this, redoing the bathrooms at Lakeview Arena so it doesn't cost the Parks and Rec Department to do it. At the same time, I want to go back to this whole Brownfield and what they pay for, because I have, I have been annoyed, which is why I sign up for this commission election, I've been annoyed that almost every single housing development program you guys have talked about since affordable housing was approved by you guys and Bonsall left, they've all been commercial ventures. None of it is a generational wealth. And I mean this in the sense of, I can buy an A-frame or a tiny home right now off of eBay or whatever, Amazon, get it delivered for $55,000. If I can put that onto a small lot, I can then pay that off, say it costs $100,000 to get done, I can pay that off, but now I have a fully functional house that I can use as collateral for other loans, AKA sending your kids to college or getting them braces or doing whatever when there's a calamity. But if I'm in a condo, if I'm in an apartment, you take a fee for it, you might have only a $1,200 or $1,700 rental cost, but if I'm at an apartment complex, how much money do you guys get? I mean, right now, my bills for my single house right now is $100. I am the very minimum for trash pickup, I am the very minimum for water. Does every individual apartment on these big projects that get Brownfield funding, do they pay you individually? Or is it a group kind of thing? So the housing complex itself pays you a blank rate? And if they do, I hope that blank rate is pretty high because my one rate, my 1,000 gallons of water, I can't go and wash my car, I can't go and water the lawn, I will go up to two, which, again, your, our metrics are one, two and three. I don't know if it's 1,000 gallons, 100 gallons, 2,000 gallons or what, but our meters are now digitally activated. How come I can't have a direct meter reading and that I pay for? Again, let me go back to, Brownfield Development is supposed to help pay for infrastructure improvements. Let's use the lead that we need to rip out and some of that funding to pay for it. I don't know how to do it, but you guys do. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and move along to comments from the commission. And Commissioner Larson, I will begin with you.
I don't think I have any tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Mayor?
Yeah, why not? Just kind of wanted to respond a little bit to some of the comments here. Starting off, I guess, with North Marquette, I wanted to note on a public infrastructure front, and I happen to live in North Marquette, so I just, these were off the top of my so I just, these were off the top of my head here. Over the last couple of years, I mean, we, they've, the city has put in new sidewalks in Union Street, which is right by the baseball diamonds over there, there wasn't a walkway before. A lot of kids in that area, it's great that that's there now. New sidewalk and bike path connecting Wright Street to Lake Shore, new infrastructure going in over near Tours Park. The roads are all in great shape, which I'm very thankful for, but all that's public infrastructure. When we're talking about TIF, and I think this ties in the Lakeview aspect, too, we have to be capturing some sort of tax for the TIF to work. If the city owns the property or the infrastructure, we're not collecting taxes off ourself to fund any sort of TIF project. So, that's kind of where that challenge comes in, where, yes, the housing projects we've been doing are commercial, and that's why we're able to do some of that financing. I'd also like to point out, which you can, you can look at some of the city master plan documents, the amount of taxes that things like the condos, which I know a lot of people have feelings about condos, but the amount of taxes they generate in comparison to a residential neighborhood is just, it's staggering, the comparison. That's really the only thing I want to comment on. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioner Otteway?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the successes and, and kind of some things for us to look at when it comes to our big weekend in Marquette with Art on the Rocks and Blueberry Fest. So, first off, great from police and fire and everyone else involved in making sure that those events were, were safe and as safe as possible. But just some general observations as I noticed the influx of people in town. We are in need of really starting to wonder if it makes sense, one, to have those events on the same weekend, two, if we are going to have them on the same weekend, potentially we need to figure out an alternate route on Lake Shore Boulevard, because it, it was pretty crazy driving on Lake Shore over much of the weekend, and I think it's, it's with both of the Art on the Rocks festivals going on at the same time, they've gotten really big and awesome, which I think is amazing, but I don't know that anyone ever thought that they would get that big, and I fear that it's, it's becoming something that is very difficult for people living in that area especially, and especially driving in that area. So, it's something I want us to be mindful of as we, as we think about this next year, and maybe plan a little bit more accordingly, leading up to that event. That's it.
Thank you. Protem Hanley?
I don't have anything to...
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you. To kind of jump on the event wagon there, it was a very, very busy weekend, as everybody knows, if you were around this weekend. And I just want to say thank you to all of the people that make those events happen. At the same time, you know, there's got to be some, some policing on their part, too. I don't, I don't know if anybody else noticed it, but we had people camping in the Shyrus parking lot, and they had permits because they were supposedly doing security for the event, but, you know, there's, I think we're looking at that, and people are going to start thinking that they can pull into any parking lot on any busy weekend and throw a tent up or sleep in their van or, you know, take advantage of the situation. So, I don't know if there's a right or a wrong, or maybe just a conversation to have with the organizers on that, to allow, allow them to park certain spots, but it was, it was just something that I've seen in the past, and I, and I don't want to start letting people think that they can just park anywhere in town anytime that they want. After the last big rain event, that was shortly after our last meeting, and I just want to say how happy I am, and I bring it up several times a year when I talk about the need to spend money on our infrastructure, and to be able to sustain that kind of a watering down, you know, what was that, about 40 minutes and a couple inches of rain or whatever it was? You saw the Facebook posts of the water and the manhole covers being blown open because of the flow. That was really something, and one of the first things I did is I reached out to the city manager and said, "How are we sitting?" I was really worried to find that we were, you know, beat up after that rain event. And because of the forethought, or, you know, the ideas that we go through and we plan for our infrastructure the way that we do, we came out of that one relatively unscathed. And the smaller events, you know, smaller washout areas that did occur, I did have a number of people reaching out to me saying, "Hey, what about here? What about there?" And I'm telling you, talk about, before the end of the day, those things were taken care of by our city staff, so kudos to them. Please pass that along to everybody at the DPW, but that was really a, I had water running places that I didn't know it could run, so that was really something. But that's why we spend money, we put it into those important areas in our infrastructure to plan for events like that. So, it makes me really proud to see that we're not incurring the issues that people like Houghton and Copper Country did back in the time of their big events. So, other than that, I'm, I'm pretty much good to go and take advantage of these beautiful days.
Commissioner Smith?
I think the things are pretty well covered, but I will remind folks to get out and vote on Tuesday. It's a primary election for the City Commission. I will be termed out in November. I have only a few meetings left, so someone has to replace me. And then, we've got Commissioner Otteway, who was appointed to his seat, and, you know, is running for reelection and some other folks as well, so make sure to vote for that. There's other local elected offices for voting as well, and some ballot initiatives at the county level. Your voice and your vote matters, in my opinion, more at the local level than anywhere else, so just a word to not get too swept up in the national and the state stuff, focus on the local and focus on your neighbors. Thank you.
I have one thing I want to comment about, and that is that our city has a formal sister city agreement with Hagashiomi Japan, and there's going to be a contingency of, from Hagashiomi here starting tomorrow afternoon, and they will be here through August 6th. So, you might see that group around town, they are being hosted by residents here for all of that time, and there are special events, and this is their time to learn about our city as we go in opposite years to learn about their city. So, give them a warm welcome when you see them, and they'll be happy to exchange that welcome back to you. I also want to just ask the city manager or city staff to touch on a few things that came up during public comment. One is the updating on the dredging at Presque Isle, and the other is since our advocate for sustainability in biking is here, maybe we just want to touch again on the grant they were getting for the planning of the biking.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So, to touch on a couple of the questions real quick before I do send one over to Deputy City Manager for answering, is the update on the dredging project at this point in June? Don't have any update on July just yet, but in June, the project was at about 60% complete, and the project is paused at this moment, or was paused at that moment to allow for the fish spawning. So, that is maybe on a little bit of a pause for now, but will be picking up again here to complete. So, the, the vote that was seen, and I don't have confirmation, but there were several comments, including some, a little bit of investigation, too, but when you load a boat, sometimes it does get a little bit off balance on that one, but again, not my, not my territory, but I did see quite a few of those comments. And then, Sean, if you wanted to mention something about the bike infrastructure, infrastructure planning or shared spaces, granted, that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. First, yep, we went and restriped some of the lines that are in the city, but really, I have a kind of two-step grant solution that I'm working on, just to overall improve our bike infrastructure in the city. The first is an application that we're waiting to hear back on from the Shared Streets and Spaces grant through MDOT. We applied for this a few months ago, and it would be a $200,000 grant with an additional $100,000 worth of leverage funding to totally refresh the current infrastructure we have now and the current bike route, approved bike route plan we have right now. So, hoping to hear on that in the next couple of weeks and see if we got it. I think we put forth a really strong application that hit exactly what MDOT was asking for from this one-time opportunity. And the second would be our rural development grant from IMDAR. That's something that we have been approved for. I'm still waiting on the grant agreement for that, so I can write our request for proposals for our planning services, but that would be to really take bike infrastructure in the city to the next level. It would be to plan for that next level, to have a firm come in, give us guidance on, you know, what does protected infrastructure look like in a winter city? What enhancements should we be making beyond just painted lines and engaging with the community to see how that interacts? So, that's kind of a, you know, next two-year approach with grants, and then the next, you know, three to 10-year approach. That's what we're looking for.
Thank you. And then, I do just have two more quick items real quick to mention. So, we talked about special events and how wonderful they are for our community, and they do bring in lots of visitors and residents alike to enjoy our downtown, but also our shoreline areas. Without the volunteer commitments from those organizations, it wouldn't be possible, but also, there's quite a bit of staff time that does go into that with our, between our police, fire, and public works. So, putting out those barricades, reviewing safety policies and other things is really important to making sure that those events are safe. So, a great shout out to them, especially in the summer months when they tend to be a little bit short-staffed and having to come in perhaps after hours to set some of these things up. And then, to touch on waterfront safety, I just wanted to kind of give a kudos to our lifeguards out there that, that do monitor our beaches. We have gone from a large roster of lifeguards down to a core group of lifeguards, just because it is difficult to hire, but then also, this is a major responsibility and tends to be perhaps some that are more seasonal, maybe even students that are taking this big responsibility on to protect our, our residents and visitors while they're in the water. And while we cannot guard the beaches all of the time, and especially in those tough situations with weather even where we don't have lifeguards, we are investing in some equipment that is going to assist us in notifying and alerting people when it is not safe to swim, and that would be the SwimSmart equipment. And we did already have approval to purchase that, and we are continuing to invest in that over the years. That is not to replace lifeguards by any means, it is used to supplement, but if there is a time where we are unable to hire adequate number of staff for lifeguards, we will be relying very much solely on that equipment. The incident that happened at the beach, I'm not really at liberty to mention, but I want to say that our lifeguards and our public safety and first responders acted swiftly, and we are incredibly proud for their efforts. And again, they have a lot of responsibility on those beaches to keep us safe, so keep them in mind as well as we enjoy our beaches. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will conclude the meeting at 6:59 p.m.